Good morning. My name is Marjorie Velazquez and I'm the Chair of Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection. I'd like to thank everyone for joining us this hearing, joint with the Committee on Public Safety chaired by Camilla Hanks. Today, we will focus on the enforcement of the city's laws pertaining to secondhand auto dealers and issues of theft prevention, as well as two pieces of related legislation. The first, Intro 525A in relation to the purchase of catalytic converters sponsored by Councilmember Brewer, and the second, Intro 759 in relation to the creation of a program to distribute catalytic converter etching kits sponsored by Councilmember Lee. Used car dealerships are consistently one of the most common sources of consumer complaints in the city. The Department of Consumer Worker Protection licenses all dealers in secondhand goods. Additionally, they issue a separate license carrying with it additional responsibility to secondhand auto dealers. Historically, used car dealers have employed deceptive tactics such as bait-and-switch advertising, issuing subprime auto loans, and failing to make crucial disclosure to unknowing buyers. Over the years, the council has passed numerous local laws to tighten relations pertaining to used car dealers. We are interested in hearing from the administration on enforcement of these local laws, as well as whether there was any uptick in violations pertaining to car purchases during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic, as many New Yorkers found themselves purchasing cars for the first time and price gouging prevailed in relation to various consumer products. Relatedly, the committees seek to address the issue of rampant theft of catalytic converters in the city. Notably, we'd like a better understanding of why these thefts are so prevalent and what happens to these stolen car parts that make it so valuable. Particularly, what if any role the businesses licensed by DCWP, including secondhand dealers, scrap metal processors, and auto wreckers, play in proliferating or curbing this theft? Just this week, the state took steps, hold on, just this week, the state took steps, there we go, to address this issue by passing legislation pertaining to documentation and chain of custody issues regarding the sale of catalytic converters. We'd like to do our part at the local level by tying responsibility to businesses licensed by the city and making sure New Yorkers receive the most helpful tips and protection from local enforcement. I'd like to thank central staff who helped putting this hearing together, Wyam, Chad, and Josh. Now, I'd like to read a statement from Public Safety Chair Hanks. Although I'm unable to join you today, I want to thank my colleagues for having this important and timely hearing. And particularly, I'd like to thank Chairperson of Committee on Consumer Worker Protection, Marjorie Velazquez, for reading these comments on my behalf. That's a little odd, y'all. But, you know, it's Thursday. Today, our committees will be hearing two bills, Intro 525 and Intro 759, both of which I'm proud to be signed onto. Together, these bills seek to address the recent uptick in catalytic converter thefts, which have become a pervasive issue in our city, particularly car-reliant areas like my district and Staten Island. In my district office alone, we've received numerous calls from residents who have either been the victim of these crimes or fear that their vehicle may be next. During already difficult times, the economic impacts of catalytic converter theft are extremely burdensome on the average New Yorker, with replacements costing up to $3,000. And coupled with the economic impacts, catalytic converter theft poses major environmental and public health concerns, since their purpose is to convert harmful substances in our cars' exhaust into safer and less toxic fluids. Intro 525 and Intro 759 serve as critical efforts towards limiting the profitability and feasibility of catalytic converter theft. The distribution of these kits to etch identifying numbers into catalytic converters, coupled with requiring the disclosure where a seller got the converter before they were able to sell it to an auto body shop, would work to both deter this crime and bring bad actors trying to profit off of illegal activity to justice. I'm grateful for the collaboration with my colleagues on this legislation, which I know will serve to improve our city's public safety outcomes. I look forward to hearing from those testifying today. Now, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Brewer for some opening remarks.
Thank you very much. I can tell you, I don't own a car and I don't know too much about catalytic converters, but I have received tons of complaints. And I mostly look forward to hearing from the speakers who are going to be giving us much more information today. My understanding is that there are certain cars that the catalytic converters are most able to be stolen from and are best for sales. I know that the governor, as you heard earlier, has come up with some ideas. I think that hopefully what comes out of this hearing is the best possible legislation, maybe a combination of both, figuring out how we work with the federal legislation. I think that the, how we approach those who sell and how we approach those who steal are two different entities that we have to deal with, but more importantly, we have to figure out what it is that we can do to stop the literally instantaneously theft that takes place. I know there was one block in my district that one night, I think every single car that was relevant got their catalytic converter stolen from. So, the idea is to listen. Obviously, the information that we, that I'm supporting says that they should not be sold and we should find a way to stop that, and maybe the etching is another way to go about it. So, I'm here, all ears, to hear what the best solution is, but I do hope that as a result of this hearing, we do have a solution, because I think the public is looking to us to come up with how we can address it. And thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Now, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Lee for some opening remarks.
Good morning, and thank you so much, Chair Velazquez, and also virtually Chair Hanks, if she's watching, and colleagues. So, I actually, my district is in a transit desert, so we do rely heavily on cars. We have a lot of cars that people use to get to either other modes of transit or work on a daily basis. And, you know, this is happening very, very frequently, all over the city but our district. And plus, I live right by four major highways, I think. I got the Clearview, the LIE, the Grand Central, Cross Island. And so, traditionally, in that part of Queens, there's always been a ton of theft when it comes to any sort of car-related activities, because it's very easy to hop on one of those highways. And it's insane how quickly people are able to take the catalytic converters off the cars, and unfortunately, this actually happened to one of our staff. And, you know, on top of all the rising costs, this is another burden that falls on a lot of our constituents and city residents. And so, you know, I'm proud and thank you so much for having me here today to talk about Intro 759. And I just want to especially thank, you know, the officers and attorneys at NYPD, at the City Council, and elsewhere, because we need your help and consulting with you to refine the legislation and work on the bill. So, I look forward to hearing from your testimony today and your insights on this, and thank you so much.
So, I'd like to recognize Councilmembers Abreu, De La Rosa, Joseph, and Manon as well. And now, we're going to get everyone their oath.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Josh Kingsley, Counsel of the Public Safety Committee. We're here for the Public Safety Committee and Consumer Affairs hearing. From the administration, we're going to have testimony from DCWP and NYPD. I'm going to call your names, and if you could just raise your right hand and affirm the following. We have Michael Tiger from DCWP, James Hurst from DCWP, Inspector Michael Clark, and Inspector Rafael Lapalo. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and answer honestly to councilor questions?
I do.
You may go ahead. Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Good morning, Chair Velazquez, Chair Hanks virtually, and members of the committee. My name is Michael Tiger, and I am the General Counsel at the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection. Today, I'm joined by DCWP's Deputy Commissioner of Enforcement, James Hurst, and our colleagues from the New York City Police Department. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today on secondhand auto dealers and Introduction 525 relating to the purchase of catalytic converters. DCWP licenses secondhand automobile dealers, or SHADs, which are businesses selling used automobile dealers, and separately, secondhand dealers general, or SHDG, which are businesses that sell secondhand articles, such as, for example, a used catalytic converter. A licensed SHAD does not need an SHDG license if it only sells used cars. DCWP currently licenses 522 SHADs across the five boroughs. We receive a high number of complaints related to activity at these businesses each year, and in response, dedicate a high level of enforcement resources to them. Last year, we conducted 439 inspections, and so far this year, we have visited licensed SHADs 353 times. Since 2018, we have secured more than $2 million in restitution for consumers and almost $5 million in civil penalties from these businesses. Recently, we announced a settlement with two businesses in Brooklyn in response to numerous violations of city laws and rules, which included protections against deceptive practices. This settlement resulted in more than $300,000 in restitution for consumers and $500,000 in civil penalties. Separately, there are currently 3,915 businesses holding SHDG licenses. This includes 140 licensed SHADs who also hold an SHDG license to allow them to sell used goods other than used automobiles, such as a used catalytic converter. Since 2018, we have received 216 complaints regarding SHDGs, conducted 10,254 inspections, issued 1,065 violations, and recovered more than $1 million in restitution and civil penalties concerning the SHDGs. Both the SHAD and SHDG licenses include explicit record-keeping requirements for the dealer. Specifically, any licensee buying or selling a secondhand article must keep a written record of the transaction, including a description of the item sold, and information about the person from whom the purchase or sale was made. Additionally, a SHAD licensee selling a vehicle must record its vehicle identification number, or VIN, the details about its removal from the dealership, the driver license information of the purchaser, and the address to where the vehicle is removed, among other required records. Licenses must share records about these purchases with the NYPD and other law enforcement agencies at their request. Today's legislation, Intro 525, is aimed at preventing the theft of catalytic converters, which, as you'll hear from our colleagues at the NYPD, has markedly increased in recent years. Introduction 525 would require SHDG and SHAD licensees that purchase a catalytic converter to obtain information about the vehicle from which the catalytic converter was removed, and a copy of documentation proving ownership of the vehicle on the part from the seller. This information would have to be made available to DCWP, NYPD, and the Fire Department upon inspection. DCWP supports this legislation to the extent that NYPD believes its passage will aid their investigations by enabling the city to better track instances of catalytic converter theft. We look forward to working with council during the legislative process on this bill. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today regarding our licensees and related legislation. We greatly appreciate council's partnership and look forward to answering any questions you may have.
Good morning, Chair Velazquez and members of the council. I am Inspector Robert Lapalo, the commanding officer of the NYPD's Auto Crime Unit. I am joined here today by Michael Clark, the NYPD's Director of Legislative Affairs, Michael Tiger, and James Hurst from the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection. On behalf of Police Commissioner Kishant Elsoul, I am pleased to testify before your committee regarding Intros 525A and 759 under consideration today and the growing problem of catalytic converter theft. The theft of catalytic converters has become nothing short of an automotive epidemic over the last few years. In 2018, there were 1,298 reported thefts of catalytic converters in the United States. In 2019, there were 3,389. In 2020, the number jumped to 14,433, and in 2021, there were more than 52,000 such thefts. That is more than a 3,900% increase nationwide since 2018, and unfortunately, there is no sign that this is slowing down. In New York City, we have experienced a similar spike. In 2018, 198 catalytic converters were stolen. In 2019, it was 211. In 2020, it was 802, and in 2021, there were 3,705, a 1,771% increase from 2018. So far this year, there have been 7,334 such thefts compared to 2,285 at the same point last year, a 220% increase. The significant increase in thefts is driven largely by the surging value of three metals that are found in catalytic converters: rhodium, palladium, and platinum. At the beginning of 2018, rhodium cost about $1,700 per ounce; palladium cost about $1,000 per ounce; and platinum was just under $1,000 per ounce. At their peak, rhodium was worth as much as $29,000 per ounce; palladium, $3,400 an ounce; and platinum, over $1,300 per ounce. Today, rhodium sells for nearly $14,000 per ounce; palladium sells for a little bit more than $2,000 per ounce; and platinum sells for just under $1,000 an ounce. At these prices, the financial incentive simply has become too great with unethical scrap yards and other buyers paying $250 or more for one catalytic converter. Stealing catalytic converters is not difficult. These use commonly-available power tools to extract the catalytic converter from the underside of a car. For only a few minutes of work, thieves earn hundreds of dollars while victims pay thousands. Crude extraction methods cause substantial damage to the car, costing victims thousands to repair on top of the substantial cost to replace the catalytic converters. These crimes are also difficult to solve. Most catalytic converters lack unique identifiers. As a result, they are all interchangeable, making it impossible to prove that a converter sold to a scrapyard is the same converter that was stolen from a victim's car. Prior to turning my attention to the bills being heard today, I would like to thank the council for your help in deterring these criminals from victimizing hard-working New Yorkers. Intro 525A would require that secondhand dealers or anyone who purchases catalytic converters for commercial use collect information on the vehicle that it was removed from, as well as proof that the seller either owns the vehicle or was otherwise authorized to remove the catalytic converter. Records of these transactions must be maintained for at least five years. The department supports the intent of the legislation, and we look forward to working with the council to pass the most effective version of this bill. Increased record-keeping is, of course, welcome and would assist in deterring catalytic converter thefts. Requiring proof of ownership and long-term record-keeping will limit the purchase and sale of stolen catalytic converters, and we have seen similar pawn shop and secondhand dealer record-keeping requirements provide a strong deterrent to purchasing the stolen property at these establishments. Additionally, this bill would align with the goals of Chapter 574 of the laws of 2022, signed earlier this week by Governor Hochul, which requires increased record-keeping by vehicle dismantlers and scrapyards when purchasing a catalytic converter. Intro 759 would require the NYPD and the Department of Transportation to establish a program to distribute etching kits in order to enable vehicle dealers to etch unique identifiers on catalytic converters. It would also require that the department distribute etching kits to the public and assist in using such kits. Finally, it would require that the department engage in outreach, informing the public of the efforts to curb catalytic converter theft. The existence of unique identifiers on items that are susceptible to theft is a powerful tool, which enables law enforcement to identify and trace stolen property. For several years, the department has offered such a service for items prone to theft, such as smartphones and laptop computers, bikes, and on car windows free of charge. In October, the department began our own catalytic converter etching program in Queens, with further initiatives in Brooklyn, Staten Island, and Manhattan. Tomorrow, we will host a catalytic converter etching event in the Orchard Beach parking lot in the Bronx from 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Officers etch a unique code on a person's catalytic converter at no cost to the member of the public. So far, the department has provided etching for nearly 2,000 vehicles. Having a unique identifier on the catalytic converter assists our investigators in linking a person who sold a catalytic converter to the theft of the converter. As the etching program expands, so too will our ability to identify the criminals driving the spike in converter thefts. Currently, the department is exploring expanding this pilot to make it a citywide program available in every precinct, provided that additional funding is made available to support this initiative. Total reliance on the NYPD to conduct etching is an imperfect method to get the roughly 3 million registered cars in the city etched. As such, it is important that we collectively explore whether the solution lies in city, state, or federal law, additional touchpoints where catalytic converters can be etched. The NYPD stands ready to do its part in combating these steps, and we look forward to continuing to work with the council to address this issue. Thank you for this opportunity to speak before you today, and we look forward to answering any questions you may have.
Thank you. So, we'd like to begin with our questions. So, going to DCWP, does DCWP license scrap metal processors as part of its secondhand licensing scheme, or is this a separate license issued pursuant to state law?
It's the latter, Chair. There's a separate scrap metal processor law. It's pursuant to a state law. And the structure of the licensing scheme is actually a bit different.
Can you explain?
Yeah, I mean, the, so this body has passed various laws within the administrative code for secondhand dealer general licensees. As I said, the scrap metal processing, and those are enforceable by our agency. Some of them are consumer protection. Some of them are record-keeping provisions that are there to ensure that NYPD has the information that they need when they conduct a criminal investigation. Scrap metal processors under state law, we license them, but, and there are record-keeping requirements, but the record-keeping requirements are not enforced by DCWP.
And then, the same for auto wreckers?
We don't license auto wreckers as auto wreckers.
Okay. Thank you. So, DCWP has received over 5,000 complaints about this industry, which has led to over 3,300 inspections. How does DCWP determine whether a complaint should move to the inspection stage, and what is the likely timeframe for these inspections?
Are we talking, we're talking about SHADs now, secondhand automobile dealers? So, we're not talking about the catalytic converter issue? We're talking about the used car dealerships?
Yeah, the secondhand, yeah, the SHADs.
Generally, well, we do, we put in a lot of resources, both from our enforcement division, who are patrol inspectors, that my colleague, Mr. Hurst here, oversees, and from the lawyers in our general counsel division. So, we spend a lot of resources. We actually get many complaints, as you alluded to, Chair Velazquez, and we take almost all of them very seriously. And if consumers give us the information that there's been a violation of the SHAD laws and rules, we will take a look at that, and we will make a decision about whether it makes sense to be pursued through an inspection, through our enforcement division, or as part of a broader investigation held by one of our lawyers in our general counsel division.
What are the most common violations issued to the SHADs?
Overcharging, breach of contract. It's called contract cancel, but that means essentially the goods, the car was not provided in the condition that was promised. We get a lot of complaints about cars being parked on the street. That's different than, sort of, from a consumer protection standpoint. That's people in the community complaining that a dealership is using the public space in a way they shouldn't. We get unlicensed activity complaints. Those are our biggest complaints that we get.
And how many violations have been issued to the SHADs during 2022?
I think the latest numbers would have been 101 violations issued in 2022.
And what were they in 2021?
115.
So, we're looking to surpass it by the end of this year.
Yeah, it's possible.
Did consumer complaints pertaining to used car dealers increase during COVID, and was price gouging an issue in this industry?
Consumer complaints have been pretty steady from a pre- and post-pandemic standpoint. They, over the last five years, the high was actually in 2018 at 1,136, but every year has had at least, at least 850. We're at 620 at most recent count from 2022, but we obviously still have several months to go. So, we didn't necessarily see a spike during the pandemic, but it's been a consistent drumbeat, frankly, as it always has been, about complaints regarding this industry.
And have there been improvements in recent years with the industry compliance with transparency and fair dealing disclosure requirements enforced by DCWP?
I, I mean, I think that we have definitely see an array of the level of compliance across the industry. There are, of course, dealerships that are very much adhering to, sort of, the culture of compliance that we're trying to build with the regulated community. And of course, there are other actors where we receive a lot of complaints, and then we try to act and make sure that consumers get the money returned to them, and that we send a message that we are going to take action against dealerships that break the city's laws and rules.
And what kind of documentations maintained by these various SHADs to show chain of custody of the items they sell, and how often do you guys inspect it?
Well, I mean, under the secondhand article law, which combines both the SHAD and the SHDG licensing scheme that I described in our testimony, there are certain documents that they have about the basic facts of the transaction have to be recorded and made accessible to us and to PD and other law enforcement agencies.
So, now that you brought NYPD into the convo, does NYPD alert DCWP when arrests investigations indicate a licensed entity was selling stolen property?
I don't, we don't have a sort of constant give-and-take on that, but we have definitely, over the years, been alerted about licensee misconduct by PD, and we're always willing to work with PD in any joint investigation that they think would help their prosecution of criminal offenses by licensees.
Okay. I'd like to take two seconds to recognize Councilmember Stevens, Councilmember Caban, Councilmember Ose, and Ariola that's joining us virtually. Yeah, I said Stevens. I got her. I'm not going to forget my Bronx peeps. So, going back to what you mentioned about no constant give-and-take, can we expand on why does that not happen? Is there anything preventing you guys from having a more defined convo?
Well, we, I'm sorry, Chair. I mean, it's important to remember that we're not a criminal enforcement agency, so it's more if, if the police department identifies an issue where they can, where we can be of assistance to them. In an individual case, it may make sense for them, and I can't speak for them, but, but it may make sense for them to reach out to us. And of course, we're always willing to help. We're obviously a civil enforcement agency. We make sure that the licensees are keeping the records that are detailed in the administrative code, so when there comes time for a criminal investigation, the licensees can provide it to the police department, and we find that that's the best way.
And also, and I'm sorry, NYPD can also check the records on their own. They don't need to rely on us necessarily. So, there actually is sort of an efficient system already in place where there doesn't have to be sort of a weekly check-in on this issue.
Right, and I just wanted to follow up. I think it's accurate to say that we will certainly, when we find another agency that has an enforcement tool that we don't have necessarily, like, we will loop them in to see what they can do to help, right? So, if it's a problematic licensee, we'll see if they can do what they need to help, maybe suspend a license or whatever, they can do on the civil end while we do the criminal end. So, that, that does happen whenever we can identify those things. But, Michael's right, we do have the ability to look at our own, and we rely on them to make sure that the record-keeping is, the stores are on top of their record-keeping. So, when we need it for our criminal investigation, it's there.
And so, how many instances has an investigation led into auto shops for the possession of stolen property, led it to any arrests or fines?
Well, arrests, I would have to defer to my colleagues at the police department.
That would be a number we'd have to look up, and we'd get back to you with it.
Okay, I'd appreciate it. And then, lastly, does DCWP support additional documentation requirements for the purchase of catalytic converters, given the prevalence of of catalytic converters, given the prevalence of theft of those parts?
Well, we support any, any requirements that PD believes will help with them, their criminal investigation of these matters, we would be supportive of.
Does DCWP support violations of such requirements having some sort of effect on the purchaser's ability to do business with the city?
I'd have to give that a little more thought, I'd have to have a little bit of understanding about what that would mean for, are you saying that if they're a contractor with the city?
Right, and does it affect it, is if there is some effect with it?
I think we would want to talk internally with our colleagues at other agencies that really handle the contracting for the city.
Okay, thank you for that, and now NYPD, how many individuals have been arrested by NYPD for theft of catalytic converters, and what are the charges?
Well, so far this year, there have been, excuse me, there have been fifty-three people that have been arrested, with a total of a hundred and thirty-nine total arrests, meaning some were charged with multiple arrests. The charges usually stand, stem from grand larceny to petty larceny and criminal mischief, for the most part, also possession of burglars' tools when we catch them with the, the tools that they use to cut the catalytic converters out of the cars.
How many stolen catalytic converters have been recovered by y'all?
That's a number we'd have to, that's a number we'd have to try to find out if we can identify. There, because they're not marked, it's difficult to say they were stolen.
How many, are there certain precincts experiencing higher rates of catalytic converter theft than others, and if so, where?
Well, I do have it broken down by borough, I don't have the specific precincts.
Can I get precincts afterwards?
Yes.
Perfect.
But currently, right now, we're seeing the largest increases in, in the Bronx, Brooklyn South, Queens, both North and South, those are the ones that are driving the spike, but it's not unique, it's not unique to those burrows, it's actually occurring everywhere in the city.
What measures does the department take in responding to these localized patterns of reported theft?
Well, every incident that is reported is investigated, and we try to determine if there are patterns that we can find that a group of individuals are responsible for multiple catalytic converter thefts. So we, whenever we get a complaint that comes in, we investigate the complaint, and we try to, we try to make an arrest on that complaint, if it's possible.
What's the timeline with that? If I make a complaint, someone just stole it, now I'm out three thousand dollars, how soon can I expect you to apprehend someone or get someone?
That would depend on the specific circumstance, because if we have a witness that said that somebody just came and cut the catalytic converter out of their car, and they're able to identify, it would be an immediate arrest, but most likely, usually what happens is, we end up seeing surveillance video, and we have to work backwards, and depending upon the quality and the availability of witnesses, it may take some time to come to a conclusion.
Is there value in alerting local residents of this pattern of theft, and how can we raise awareness?
Yes, I, I believe there is, I believe by alerting the residents, they may be able to take measures such as signing up for our identifier program, where we are putting the unique serial number on each catalytic converter. So we encourage that the members of the public be aware. Also, just to be aware of what is happening in and of itself, will give people an idea to maybe park their car if they have the ability, availability of a driveway, maybe to park it in a, in a, right, that's what I'm saying, if they have the ability to do so. But also, just to be aware, to understand that there is this activity occurring, and maybe what to look for.
And so, does the department increase patrols in the areas with these higher rates of catalytic converter theft?
Yeah, and I think that's something we, we typically do, we, you know, all, all the precinct commanders are looking at all the data, crime data in their area, and if they see patterns in certain areas, they will send more officers to those areas, not just catalytic converter thefts, but all crime in the precincts. So that is something every precinct commander is frequently doing, to try and make sure if they, if it's identified, that this is a location that will have increased resources at those, at those places.
Can you explain the work of the auto crime unit, and how is it structured, and what are the types of investigation it conducts?
Sure, the auto crime unit predominantly investigates organized groups of individuals that steal cars for profit, and when I say by for profit, it's usually, they will change the VIN numbers, the vehicle identification number on the vehicle, so that they can sell it, either to people who are aware or unsuspecting buyers that don't realize that they're purchasing a stolen car, also vehicles that are being exported out of the country in shipping containers. So we predominantly work on those types of cases, however, we also look into large-scale parts theft as well. So if we have a ring that we are aware of that is selling catalytic converters and possibly shipping them out of the state, we try to identify them and investigate them and bring them, have them arrested as well.
To what extent does the NYPD investigate the SHADS and scrap metal processors, or even auto records for possessing and selling stolen property?
When we have an investigation ongoing that involves one of those locations, we will go in and inspect the records of those, of those establishments, to determine if the record-keeping is, is being kept properly, if certain, certain things are required to be entered into a database, and make sure that these vehicles that are being brought in, that they are entered into the database. When catalytic converters are being brought into a scrapyard or a recycler, we make sure that they have the required paperwork, the documentation, that is, the person who is selling that to the scrapyard has supplied to them with their identification, and that they have input this into the system.
And how many investigations have resulted in the seizure of stolen catalytic conversions?
I would have to get that number to you.
Do you guys use administrative subpoenas to conduct searches of auto body shops?
Not necessarily, where we are allowed to, under the DMV rules, to inspect certain books and records that they possess, to ensure that they're in compliance.
What's the typical process for stripping and selling valuable metals from stolen catalytic converters?
Well, the, the process would be that somebody would actually go out and remove the catalytic converter from the vehicle. They would bring the, the catal, this is traditional method, would be, they would bring the catalytic converter to a scrapyard, the scrapyard would, as long as they don't, are, it's not indicated that it's a stolen item, would take the documentation required from the person who's selling it to them, upload it into their system, and pay for the catalytic converter. Currently, what we're seeing is a little bit of a shift, whereas the, the people who are actually stealing them are bringing them to, say, a middleman type of situation, where we have them collecting catalytic converters from the thieves, and what they'll do is, they'll load up a truck or a van full of catalytic converters, and then bring them to a scrap processor within the city or outside of the city.
Do you believe that there is a market for stolen parts in local secondhand auto
For them to purchase stolen parts? I, I do believe that if, I've seen in the past that they have taken in stolen parts, and they have tried to conceal the fact that they were stolen. I don't know if it's as prevalent as it has been in the past, because of the inspections we have done in the past, we haven't really seen stolen parts going into auto shops as much as lately as we have in the past.
And you had mentioned in your statement about, my district, tomorrow Orchard Beach, we're gonna have you guys do the etching, can you provide a description of what the initiative is, and how many cars you do get to do in that amount of time?
Okay, sure, we, what we'll do is, we'll set up in a location such as the Orchard Beach parking lot, and what we're going to do is, I'll have my members of my unit, they have the technical expertise to do this, they will apply to each vehicle an etching kit, which has two stickers, some cars have two catalytic converters, and what this does is, they'll place the etching, the sticker, the label onto the catalytic converter, wipe it with a reactive agent, and that will embed the number, it's a unique serial number, into the catalytic converter, the part. So what we're looking to do is have three stations where the residents can pull up, and we can safely jack up the vehicle, so we can get underneath as soon as it cools down, the part's very hot, as soon as it cools down, and apply this sticker. It also has a window sticker to inform people that the catalytic converter has been etched as a deterrent to thieves, and then it really should take no more, once we're, we were able to do it, no more than five or ten minutes per car, and then they can be on their way with their, with their catalytic converter etched.
Are you, are there plans to expand this program, by the way?
So I think that's something our crime prevention division is trying to, to figure out, and what we want to do is see if we can do one that's a little bit more efficient and more cost-effective, that we can, you know, etch more catalytic converters, because I think these cost about ten dollars each. So right now, they're testing other options to see if it, there's a better way, and a quicker way, and a more cost-effective way. So that's something we're looking at right now, and hopefully, we can figure out a way to get more cars and be better at it.
And how do you raise awareness of these initiatives, besides, like, people like myself, like, retweeting and sharing on socials? Do you mention it during precinct council meetings? How do you work with local precincts to make sure that this, that folks and residents are aware?
We work with the community affairs folks for each borough, and that they, with their contacts, provide the information to get the word out, we rely on them to, to have everybody know where the event is, so that my team can actually do the installation.
Now, does the NYPD support Intro 759, which seeks to codify the etching program?
Yeah, so I think we, we support etching as a general matter, so we, we're excited to see it in, in legislation. I think what we would need to figure out and work with you and Councilmember Lee is, is how to effectively touch the most vehicles as possible. So I think that's, that's a great start, and we should work on that and that stuff we're doing anyway, but we should, how, how do we get the most catalytic converters etched as possible, and that's sort of what we need to figure out together, and the legislation that will make that happen, whether it's, and what the city can do, some of it may be federal or state laws, but, you know, where, where the city can interact is, you know, so that, the idea of etching, we support, and we'll, how to make that, work how to make that as broad as possible.
Do you have any suggested or recommended changes to the legislation right now?
So I think, you know, a few things, so, and I mentioned, you know, it's not necessarily a city council bill, but I think a federal bill that would help is, there is a federal law that requires certain car parts to be etched with the VIN, it's doors, bumpers, hoods, engines. I think globally, and that's necessarily for here, but globally, if we could figure out a way, if the, if Congress could act and make that mandatory for cars across the nation, because even if we figured out a way to hit every car in New York City or every car in New York State, there's still cars coming from Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Connecticut, that won't have those protections. So I think that's probably the most efficient, but short of that, I think there are ways, and, you know, we touched upon it in, in the bill of new cars and used car dealerships, and, you know, maybe ways to figure out how to make sure that they are doing it, rather than ju, just distributing kits, making sure that it's happening. I think one thing we would suggest is also penal, coupling with a penalty, so that if you destroy the etching, or if you, you know, in some way, remove it, that's its own penalty, because that's something, you know, and that penalty exists for other parts, so those are a few things that, to explore, and, you know, at least in the city level.
And you kind of hinted at it, do you support efforts to distribute catalytic converter etching kits to car dealership, and kind of refer to, but if you can?
Yeah, I, I think to the extent they have it, and, and actually, the state, you know, at least for new car dealerships, they, in their bill, require them to have it as an option. So I think, I do think it is, now, if we get every car sold etched, that's a slow way to get there, but it is a way to get there eventually, so I do think it makes a lot of sense to, you know, work with that point, that's a touch point where we could start getting a lot of cars etched with unique codes.
Thank you, I also want to recognize Councilmember Holden, who has joined us, and I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember Brewer, who has several questions.
Thank you very much, I, one thing that isn't directly related to 525, but I had a question, which is, when you talk about paper for keeping track, is that really paper? And is that something that could be changed, so that it would be mandated, that they would keep track of what they need to keep track of electronically? That would maybe help, so you don't have to go look at the paper in the office, or is it really electronically record-keeping?
Most of it is electronic.
It is?
Yes.
But it's, but some of it is paper, in other words, I'm just trying to see, you couldn't have a better sense of some of the data by everyone being electronic? It's not really relevant, but it is relevant if you're trying to catch the bad guys.
Yes, all the information that I've seen has come electronically printed out.
Okay, so it's not a, because the way you talked about, I was a little nervous.
Well, there were some, there were some issues in, in repair shops where they actually keep paper records.
Should that be changed, do you think, or is that not relevant to the catalytic converter issue? Not as much?
At this point, I don't think it's as relevant.
Okay, might be something to look at for consumer affairs, so, keeping them electronic. The other question I have is, do the insurance companies, obviously, if you get it stolen, you're gonna call your insurance company, and then you have a long haul, are you in touch with them, are they helpful in this discussion in terms of figuring out how they can keep track of some of their requests, et cetera? I'm just trying to think of all the angles to get at these, this situation.
Yes, we work with this closely with the National Crime Insurance Bureau, to ensure that all, all the bases are covered when it comes to these, these occurrences.
So they keep track of the specifics in terms of filings for catalytic conversion? I'm just wondering if that's another avenue to?
I can't speak for how they keep their records, but I'm sure that they are, are able to get that information from the insurance companies.
Okay, wouldn't that be helpful with us trying to figure out exactly where the problems are, or it's not relevant?
Well, we know where the problems are through the, the reporting system.
Okay, because the insurance company might add to it, that's what I'm trying to say.
Sure.
Okay, the other thing I have is, question is, on the legislation, is there a specific type of car that, or is it across the board in terms of the catalytic converters? In other words, are there certain cars that are more demand by the thieves?
Yes, there are.
That is my understanding, because people say, my car didn't get stolen, but my neighbors did, and it's a different kind of car.
That's correct, the thieves are aware of which catalytic converters, from which vehicles to take, which would give them the most money, the resale value. They are also aware that if someone's catalytic converter has been replaced, that that catalytic converter isn't worth as much as one that came on the car originally, so they bypass that as well.
Okay, do you, can you give us a sense of which cars are more prone to bribery?
I, I can tell you absolutely, the Toyota Prius was one of them, it, because it has two catalytic converters in a line, so it's basically, all they have to do is make two cuts, it's quick, and now they have two catalytic converters, so that was highly sought after.
Okay, that, that's definitely what I have heard, the same thing. In terms of 525, I appreciate the general support, are there ways that you think that it could be improved, obviously, and, and also, how does, I know you mentioned how the Governor Hochul on the state law plays a role, but if you could just add anything that 525 should also include, and how does this fit in with the state legislation?
Yeah, I, I think it, it.
Oh wait, this guy's one of my heroes, we went listening to noise together. Noisy police cars, we had a great time together.
Yeah, I, I think, I think, so it pairs nicely in the sense that they're, they're complementary, you know, legislation, so the, the state legislation is gonna increase the amount of repaying for the scrap processors, and I think this complements that and increases it for the, the secondhand dealers, right? So I think, so I think that's good, I think, you know, like you said, making some of it, making sure it becomes electronically into the electronic system is a good ideas, I think, you know, making sure to the extent we have etching, or we have unique numbers, that that is also something that's collected, just to thinking, but, you know, we certainly want to work with you on making sure that's, whatever. want to work with you on making sure that's, whatever else is in there, we'll get in there, but that's just two things that we were thinking.
Okay, and do you have a sense of the persons who are apprehended? Do they return? Is there any sense of, how many, is it like, you know, we always hear there are 50 people committing all the crimes in New York City, I'm just making up numbers, but it's obviously a ring, I would assume. Is there some way that you can even attack it now, as opposed, we obviously want to make it harder for them, and hopefully, this legislation will do that, but is it something that is sold online, in other words, told people online, or is it just the medals are given to the way in which you described? What's the status of these thieves, kind of, is what I'm trying to get at.
Well, the thieves, the thieves have expanded because of the knowledge of this. So there are more thieves today than there had been in the past. It used to be more of a specialty type of crime, because of, you had to know what you were looking for, you had to know how to remove it, and you had to know where to bring it to get paid. Now, there are, the thieves have their middleman, let's say, those people are advertising, they're either word of mouth, or maybe social media, and the thieves know that they can meet up with these people at a certain location, which is happening frequently. That's when the thieves will bring this, the catalytic converters, to the thief with the van that has, you know, we've seen as much as 50 catalytic converters in a van. Last week, we had an incident with 25 in a pickup truck. Unfortunately, none of them are identifiable, so it's very difficult, and just to give you a sense of how my unit investigates, we actually look for complaint reports throughout the city to see where the catalytic converters were stolen from, and then what we'll do is, we try to figure out which kind of car it came from, go to that person. Hopefully, they reported it timely, and that they didn't have the car repaired immediately, and we will actually go under the car and try to fit the piece, it's like almost a puzzle piece, to where the cuts were, so we can identify and now testify in court that, yes, this catalytic converter came from that vehicle. So now, out of the 25 that we had last week, we have one that we can identify as stolen.
I appreciate that. I think the bottom line is, we've got to solve this problem, because that's an insane amount of staffing.
Yes.
And terrific that NYPD is doing it, but let's all work together to solve the problem. Thank you very much.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Botcher, and I also would like to pass it over to Councilmember Menon for her questions.
Thank you so much, Chair. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the second-hand auto dealers and predatory loans, which has been a historic problem. When I was at the agency, we released a request for expression of interest to create a new auto loan product, so we released that RFEI to banks and credit unions to try to get them to have an auto loan product that was a safe auto loan, that had transparent terms, that didn't have terms buried in the language that locked people into a cycle of debt. Can you talk a little bit about what's happening with that, and where is the agency in terms of trying to encourage banks and credit unions to offer better auto loan products?
Well, thank you for that question, Councilmember. I'm not sure exactly what was the result of that, RFEI, to be candid, but generally speaking, I mean, one of our priorities is to look at predatory lending in different aspects across the city and for different industries. You know, we have our Office of Financial Empowerment that is working on these issues, broadly speaking, about debt and safe debt through our oversight of the Financial Empowerment Centers across the city. I would have to talk to them to get a better sense of what we're currently working on in the auto loan space, as far as safe auto loan products.
Yeah, if you could get back, as we released that in 2015, and there were banks and credit unions that were interested, we also had issued subpoenas to Santander Bank, who was clearly, and the AG entered into a settlement. Could you give an update on what's happening with Santander? Are you still, after the AG's settlement, seeing any kind of predatory practices out of them?
Well, we haven't gotten complaints specifically about Santander since I've been at the agency, over the last few years, but I can, I can go back and take a deeper dive into this.
Okay, yeah, because just, I mean, even reading the committee report, we see it's still historically a problem, so would love to know what the agency's doing to combat this subprime loan issue. Okay, thank you.
I'll turn it over now to Councilmember Stevens.
Good morning. I just had a couple of questions, because as we know, I know we're talking about the catalytic converters, but just thinking about in general, there's been a lot of theft, especially in the Bronx, around just cars in general, and vandalism, but, and my question just, I guess, is around, like, some of the auto body shops. Are there inspections done of the auto body shops? If so, how often are they done, and who's in charge of, like, kind of doing these inspections?
So, let me just, so, auto body shops are...
Like the second-hand auto body shops?
Right. If you sell second-hand goods, you have a, you have to have a second-hand dealer general license, and just to be clear, separately, the New York State Department of Motor Vehicles licensed auto body shops. And so there is a raft of records that they have to keep under DMV regulations that the state enforces. We inspect routinely all second-hand dealer general on a regular cadence, I think, the exact numbers, I don't have it broken down by auto body shops, but we've inspected SHDGs, as we call them, over 10,000 times since 2018.
What are some of the findings? Because, to be honest, we all know, for example, we all know, I know where I can go get this stuff from, like, they just stole my mirrors the other day, I went back and bought them. I mean, we know where they're at, so, like, what are you finding when you're going to these shops? Because we know where they are, we know what they're doing, and so even with these catalytic converters, like...
Well, again, just to take a step back on our regulatory scheme that we enforce, there are about two buckets of protection, or provisions of the Administrative Code for second-hand dealer generals, there are ones that are, go to our core agency mission about consumer protection, are you representing that these are new goods or used goods, you have to make that clear to the consumer, and there are all these record-keeping provisions that are really there to aid NYPD in their criminal investigations. And what our inspectors do is, they go and make sure that the second-hand dealer general licensees are keeping records in a manner prescribed by the Police Department and by the Administrative Code, so that when there comes time for PD to seek these records as part of their criminal investigation, they're in the proper order, and they can do that. Our inspectors are not actually inventorying, here are the types of second-hand goods that are being sold in your roster, because we're there just to ensure that the records are being kept in the proper order.
You're just going to look at the records, and that's it, and so, you're not looking for, like, inconsistencies or things like that, so that you can then flag with NYPD?
Well, I mean, I think I can turn to my colleague, Mr. Hurst, in a little bit more granular detail about what would happen at individual inspection, but generally, is to make sure that the records are in the proper order, as opposed to an individual investigation.
That's counterintuitive, right? Because if you're just going to look at the records, and you're not, like, looking at inventory, anyone can, like, do paperwork, right? And so that's where I'm trying to, like, I need more understanding.
Well, again, it's important to understand that PD also has access to records, and they conduct their own investigations and obtain access to these records. So we're there routinely to make sure that they're keeping records, and they're keeping, and they're kept in the proper order, and PD then can look at it for an individual, on an individual basis.
All right, great, so you guys are saying you look at the paperwork, and then PD looks at the paperwork. So who's looking for the inconsistencies?
What we'll do is, we'll inspect, at the time of inspection, see what items, inventory of used items they have, and identify the paperwork, the record-keeping reflects what we see at the time. We'll ask for an invoice at an auto body shop, and we can check that against the records to make sure they've kept the documentation. I think if a business was subject to multiple complaints, you know, we could potentially do a more in-depth investigation, NYPD would probably do a more in-depth investigation if we knew had the 311 complaints regarding that business, but in an inspection, a routine inspection of a licensee, we're just going based on the observations we can make at the time of inspection. We're comparing what's available versus what's in the records.
So if I could add, if we received a complaint of a repair shop that is taking in stolen property, we can go to the repair shop, and we can inspect the repair shop to ensure that the items that are in the repair shop are listed in the documentation that they're required to keep. In the past, we found inconsistencies, or we found no records, where the person operating the repair shop was subject to arrest based upon the statute for not upkeeping the books and records. So if we do go to have an investigation into a repair shop, we will go with either our partners from the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection, or more commonly, for repair shops, Department of Motor Vehicle Investigators.
And if you have a specific shop that you're thinking of offline?
All right, we all know where the shops is at, that's why I'm confused, and like, why are we pretending like we don't know where these shops are, and why are we not inspecting them routinely? And it's kind of strange to me, but I'll stop here, but I just think it's really weird that we're not doing consistently, we know the shops, people, even the precincts know the shops, right? Like, I mean, we're pretending like we don't, and so if we have a system where you're doing these inspections, and we're seeing the inconsistencies, what happens then, right? Like, how many times, like, do they get fined? Like, what happens? Because, like, we know where 90% of the shops are, and a lot of them in the Bronx, so, I'll leave it at that.
I actually have a question from Councilmember Abreu, he'd want me to ask. So earlier, you had described rhodium, palladium, and platinum as being the three metals that are in catalytic converters. Do we know the ounces of each per part?
It depends on the catalytic converter and the specific metal, but it's not really at the level of ounces, it's minute grams that they use to coat the ceramic substance that's inside. So it's only a few grams of each, depending upon the catalytic converter, and that's what makes it so valuable, because when you take it and you look at the cost of it per ounce, it translates into hundreds of dollars per unit.
Got it. Do any other council members... If businesses have had DCWP license revoked due to the selling of stolen auto parts? That's for you.
Has that happened?
Yes.
Is that the question?
That's the question, sorry, I was trying to read it off the paper, and not, like, sound weird, but...
No, no, no problem.
Totally failed on that one.
No problem, Chair. Not to my knowledge, as I'm sitting here, but we'd have to go back and look, and we can answer that definitively. There are cer, you can get your license revoked if you violate elements of the Administrative Code, so the requirements of the second-hand dealer general license. Also, if, you know, you're subject at renewal to a criminal conviction review, and that's based under factors that are in the New York State Corrections Law, applies to criminal convictions for anyone obtaining any sort of license in New York State, but again, but that would be after a conviction.
Okay, thank you for that. Councilmember Holden, you have a question?
Thank you, Chair, and I'm sorry I missed some of your testimony, I was at another hearing at City Hall, but so far this year, you say 7,334 catalytic converters were stolen. And I kind of missed the numbers of arrests, 50, did I hear 53?
There have been 139 arrests of 53 persons.
139 arrests, so they could be charged with multiple charges. 53 out of 7,000, that's pretty miserable. So I'm just wondering, is this because it's property crime, and, because obviously, with the understaffed NYPD, we're seeing, the precinct commanders are complaining to us constantly that the same people are getting caught, and they arrest them, and they're out the next day. That this is not a priority in, with the DAs, or, you know, have you been working with the DAs? Because if not, then maybe the council members could, because I just feel, at this point, my constituents calling every day, "Councilmember, what are you doing about this? We're getting, you know, they're preying upon us." And I think it could even be more than, a lot more than 7,000, because some people just don't even report it. They just say, "All right, what am I going to do? They're not going to get these guys," and, because 53 arrests out of, you know, let's say, 7,334, not a good record.
Yes, and to address that, the difficulty is, is that when we come in contact with the people that are in possession of what we know to be stolen, they're not identifiable, there's no unique serial numbers to prove that they are stolen, so we will not be able to establish probable cause, even though we've come in contact with the individual who actually has this in their possession, unless we come in contact with them while they're in the act of cutting the catalytic converters out. Once they drive away and they're in possession of catalytic converters, there's no way for us to say at this point that that person, we would have probable cause, establish probable cause, that that person is in possession of a stolen item, and that's why we are doing the sticker labeling program, to identify as many of these catalytic converters as possible.
Yeah, because we identified a location in my district that was storing some of these catalytic converters in their backyards, and auto crimes never, you know, again, we never heard back from them, we didn't know what's going on, they're still there, this is going a year now that we reported this, and it just seems, I just, you know, I just feel, at this point, very frustrated. So I'm just, is there something that people can actually secure the catalytic converters better? Put a sleeve on it, put some kind of metal around it, you know, do something? It's gotten to the point where people are paying, like, let's say they have a deductible on their insurance, they're paying $1,000 anyway, you know, most people have a $1,000 deductible on their insurance, right?
Yes. There are aftermarket items that are being made now that would surround the catalytic converter to make it difficult for thieves to remove. That's on the market now, that is one way that people can protect their catalytic converters. The other way is, as like I mentioned before, with our labeling program, to put some sort of unique identifier, that this way, it will deter them when they see that it is marked, so coupled with maybe an aftermarket device to protect it. Unfortunately, not all catalytic converters are in a convenient location that this kind of device could be applied to.
Right, we did the etching program in my district a number of times, I'm just wondering, has anyone been traced yet? I mean, we've been doing this for a while now, I don't know how many months, but has something shown up where somebody etched the catalytic converter and it came back?
Well, at this point, we have not seen a report of a stolen catalytic converter that has been etched.
Okay, so, but, so nothing's turned up yet?
Correct.
And, but is there a failsafe system where you're tracking that? Let's say something is etched, it's sold, how do you track it? Because let's say, I etched it, and my catalytic converter was stolen, what does the Police Department do at that point? If I report, you know, I etched it, and it was stolen, when does that kick in? What happens? Tell me the procedure.
When we come in contact with that particular item, either in the hands of the thief itself or the scrapyard.
It sounds like a needle in a haystack. I mean, the fact that if it's going to a scrapyard, that's unscrupulous, that we have all around, we have a lot of them, apparently, because they are selling them, you know, how is that number going to be reported? Is that, again, the scrapyard doesn't have to report it if it's on there, right? There's no law that says, you know, they get a catalytic converter with an etching on it, they could just sell it and not pay any penalty?
At this point, that would be correct. That's why we're pushing for identifying marks to put on catalytic converters.
Well, I think some states have actually required new car manufacturers to put the numbers on the catalytic converters, like, I think Maine has that now, I think, or at least that's going through the process, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure about other states, I know the state law that just passed requires it to be offered, at least at new car shops, it's not, I don't think it's a mandatory that they have to put it on, but it's an offer, which helps, but it's not...
It should be mandatory, because at this point, if, this is going to be lucrative for the thieves, and they can do it, and I've watched, we've watched videos, countless videos, how fast they do it, they pull up next to the car, brazen, very brazen, now they're doing it in broad daylight. They used to do it only at 2:00 AM, 3:00 AM, we see, now it's broad daylight, now they could just go anywhere and do it, because it's, again, the consequences of getting caught, even if they get caught, they're out the next day, or they're not even, they don't do any time, and that, I think, is the issue, and again, we're being preyed upon. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Joseph?
Good morning. Earlier, I know you talked about it, but I wanted to know what precincts are offering the etchings? What precinct? Can you tell me?
Well, currently, right now, it is the auto crimes units that's doing the etching, and we are expanding the program citywide so that we can offer it, we offer it to the patrol borough, and the patrol borough will let us know where they believe it would be most effective. So that's how we're determining what precincts the program has been in.
And I just want to, it's not every precinct all the time, it's when the auto crime sets up for...
It's when the auto crime sets up for these events, or crime unit sets up for the events, what we're exploring is trying to make it more universal and have it available more of the time, and trying to figure out a way to do that.
Yeah, you mentioned Brooklyn South. I represent one of those areas, especially in the 67th precinct. What is being done with that precinct?
Again, that would, that would be determined by the patrol borough as to where they would like us to set up this operation so we could label it. And as I said, we are trying to expand this, to get this out as much as possible.
How many etchings have you done?
Probably just under 2,000 at this point.
2,000, but yet we have 7,000 converters being stolen. So that, again, the numbers, I'll, I'll have to piggyback with Councilmember Golden. How do you raise awareness? How does communities know about this event? Is it done in different languages? Or is it done, because we do serve, I represent a large immigrant community, and as there are converters being stolen, is that being offered in languages as well? Language access being offered?
We rely on the community affairs people from the borough and from the police department to get the word out. My unit is basically responsible for do, doing the operation and supplying the, the etchings. So I'm not exactly familiar with things, how they proceed with that.
Yeah, I think, you know, they, they certainly publish it on their social medias. They, the community affairs officers are supposed to talk to members, you know, key members of the community, let them know, to see if they can spread the word that it's happening. I don't know if the 67th precincts has had one, but we can, we could...
Yeah, I represent Brooklyn South, and 67 is one of my hot precincts.
Right.
I would love to see it happen there. And I'm a senior citizen and I drive, and I'm not on social media. How does that word get to me?
Right, and I think that's part of, you know, community affairs using the community contacts to try and put it out. And try to get us...
How do you penalize, or is there any, I know Councilmember Stevens also asked that, what are you doing to penalize secondhand shops that are selling these parts?
Well, if, if we've come across, say, a scrapyard that's taking these in, and they're not following the existing rules by keeping the documentation required, then we will now, possibly, they may be subject to arrest themselves for failure to maintain the books and records that are necessary. Most of the times we go in now, we find that they are in compliance and that they're taking the information supplied by the seller, the thief or seller, and they're, they're loading it into their systems. And they have been cooperative to the point where they will give us that information readily upon asking.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no other questions, then we will go to those that are on Zoom, because I believe those are the ones from the public who have questions. You guys are welcome to stay, but you can also leave if you like. We'd like to have somebody here to listen to the public. Thank you very much, and we look forward to passing legislation and solving this problem.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember.
First up, we'll hear from Paula Frendel, followed by Vic Benson. Paula, you may turn on your camera, and we'll unmute you in one sec. Paula?
Hi, everybody. Hi, good morning. I want to thank the committee for having me. My name is Paula Frendel. I'm the Director of the New York Independent Auto Dealers Association. We represent all the used car dealers in the state of New York. We're also affiliated with the National Independent Auto Dealers Association. I do have a couple of questions and comments. Regarding Intro 525, it does state that the purchaser would be required to determine if the catalytic converter is present, is consistent with the one removed, and it has further language. I, I think there might be an omission there, because it, it does not state that the dealer or anyone who's purchasing, they should not be responsible for any erroneous information that might be obtained by the seller of this catalytic converter. Also, what will verify that it's authentic? Does the document need to be notarized or signed besides the owner? These are just a couple of questions that we have on 525 at this point. I do want to say that we are supportive of a process to eliminate catalytic converter theft. Actually, my daughter was a victim of it, and we had to get her a complete new car for college. So I do want to see legislation that does work. Also, I'm hearing that there isn't any legislation in regards to if a party actually removes the etching. I believe that would be a really important aspect of the legislation. You could etch all you want, but if someone is actually just going to scratch it off and, you know, break open the catalytic converter and take out, you know, its precious metals, it's really not going to be helping us at that point. I'll stop there on 525, and then we can go on to 759. And then I have some other thoughts I'd like to discuss with you in regards to the used car dealers in the state of New York.
Thank you very much. Your comments are excellent and will be included. I appreciate it very much.
Okay. Shall I move on to 759 then?
Yes.
It seems unclear if the dealer must do the etching. I did get confirmation that it is not mandatory, maybe that you want to put that into the language. Also, is there a timeframe for the public to etch this? Is there any way to verify the etching is the same kit that was provided to the public? How can you track the kits to make sure they are authentic? These are all questions that we have. And also, how will we know the public is doing this etching properly? Is there any kind of procedure? Is there any kind of hazard for them to be, for them to be doing that?
These are all good questions that will be considered when the legislation is reviewed.
Okay. And then on a broader scope, there's a lot of mention about deceptive practices of used car dealers and other dialogue like that. I do want to let you know that the association is open to any kind of mandatory education for the independent car dealers for pre-licensing and continuing education. New York is one of the only, New York and New Jersey is actually one of the few states that do not have mandatory education. I have some open dialogue with Senator in Albany to start that process. I would ask the committee if they were interested in maybe spearheading this, because it could probably get done quicker in the five boroughs. So it's something that I did want to bring to your attention, that we are open to, and we'd like to expand the conversation at this point.
Thank you. I hope that you will submit your excellent ideas and writing, and we look forward to working with you.
Okay, thank you.
Up next, we'll hear from Vic Benson. Vic, you may begin as soon as you're unmuted.
All right, good morning. My name is Vic Benson, and I am the Policy Analyst at City Meals on Wheels. I'd like to thank the council for holding this important hearing on catalytic converters, a pressing issue for nonprofit service providers relying on specialty vehicles. City Meals works in partnership with the city and a network of home-delivered meal providers funded by the Department for the Aging to fill a significant gap in its home-delivered meals program by funding the continued delivery of meals on weekends, holidays, and emergencies to homebound older adults alongside supplemental feeding and connective services. In the past year, home-delivered meal providers and older adult centers have reported frequent repeated catalytic converter theft. When a delivery truck or transportation van has its converter stolen, replacing it will be a time-consuming and costly process that strains contracted funds and interrupts service to vulnerable home-delivered meal recipients. Anytime a truck breaks, the meals delivered by that truck must be delegated to other delivery routes, creating longer wait times for hungry recipients and longer days for deliverers already engaged in strenuous work. When older adult centers have converters taken from their transportation vans, it impacts service, forcing centers to cancel newly resumed activities and trips. These bills would enforce proper sourcing for catalytic converters, which will defer, which will deter theft, easing a burden that comes with specialty truck maintenance. However, they do not address an important point of vulnerability for nonprofit service providers regarding these thefts, which is the lack of reliable parking for provider vehicles. While home-delivered meal programs are largely funded through city dollars, their contracts do not include adequate provisions or funding to maintain the infrastructure required to run them. We have heard from programs in all five boroughs affected by converter theft, and when programs lack a secure place to park their vehicles, they become more susceptible to theft, especially when left on the street overnight. Given that the city recognizes the critical importance of providing home-delivered meals and transportation services to older adults with limited mobility, it stands to reason that it should also provide adequate support and funding to ensure the proper maintenance of the infrastructure required to operate these programs. Vehicle security and maintenance are not an optional part of running these vital programs. Moreover, it is not cost-efficient to fund the purchase of vehicles, but not their security and maintenance. Because these services, these service vehicles are target for catalytic converter thefts, more is needed to ensure that they are protected. We see how providers with a secure place to park, whether that is onsite or through relationships with other members of their community that have space, have far fewer instances of catalytic converter theft, vehicle damage, or break-ins, and thus fewer service interruptions and lower repair and maintenance costs. So while we support these bills, we also ask that the council consider additional actions to ensure that city contracted program, programs like home-delivered meals receive the proper infrastructure support, including in this case, secure parking to combat the underlying security issues facilitating catalytic converter theft, as well as other damage and break-ins that routinely occur. Thank you for the time. We will be submitting a written comment with more information and anecdotes.
Thank you very much.
At this time, if anyone is here that wishes to testify but has not been called on would like to do so, please step forward. Okay, seeing nobody's hand, may close out.
We're going to close out this hearing. Thank you all very much for your testimony on this important topic. One more question. Go ahead, you have a question? Recognize the very important councilmember from the Bronx, Councilmember Ferris. Thank you very much. Closed out, thank you.